Well, everybody's so quiet, I cannot say. The meeting will come to order. We have already come to order.[4.41][4.41][laughter] The meeting will please come to order. Ms. Gore, will you call the robe?
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin?
Present.
Ms. Fletcher?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Viall?
Present.
I'm going to ask Ms. Speakman if you would lead us in our pledge to the flag, and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
[inaudible]
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 Thank you.
Well, board members, we have a special treat tonight from Arlington Elementary School. I would like to present the Arlington Elementary Space Cadets.
We are excited to share everything we have learned about long-term space travel with you. Put your seat belts on, because we are going into orbit. I'm Savannah.
I'm Sawyer.
I'm Luke.
I'm Sheesh.
I'm Lily.
I'm Jacob.
And we are the ADS Space Cadets.
Nice.
We are three-time competition qualifiers, four-time, five-time, three-time, and probably four-time. We got two awards at competition this year. We competed against 13 teams that had students up to eighth grade. The first award was the West Tennessee Qualifier. We won the Best Overall Project Award and a spot to compete in the championship. Next, we competed at the West Tennessee Championship at the University of Memphis. We competed against 50 teams where we received the COVID Project Research Award. A project challenge was to identify a human, physical, or social problem faced during long-term.
Our project challenge was to identify a human, physical, or social problem faced during long-term space exploration within our sun solar system and propose a solution.
We are two awards at the competitions this year. We competed against 13 teams that had students up to eighth grade. The first award was the West Tennessee Qualifier. We won the Best Overall Project Award and a spot to compete at the championship. Next, we competed at the West Tennessee Championship at the University of Memphis. We competed against 50 teams where we received the COVID Project Research Award.
Our favorite part of this year was the phone conference with NASA and Lockheed Martin engineers. We talked to the people engineering the Orion project that will take humans to Mars. We shared our research and project ideas with them. They helped us decide on one project to work on.
Wow. Very.
We created a skid and commercial to show our innovation.
Has this ever happened to you?
Oh, man. I lost a lot of muscle when I saw my last pair. Although it has been frequently, how frequently every day?
Every other day, you fuckin'...
Oh. Hey, what's all this fuss about?
We are debating on how much to exercise in space.
Well, y'all think about it.
Once every day.
No, once every other day.
You're both wrong. It's twice every day.
Stop this at once. Maybe this is how your problems. I got this idea from the kids at the Orangeville Elementary School. We call them Stuff to Space Cadets. Check out their app. Please, turn on.
Okay.
Hello, astronauts.
We have a special product for you.
Is your energy payload weighing you down? Well, we can reduce it today with the Electro.
The Electro is lighter than bringing a generator, and in space, it weighs nothing. It's portable, so it would take up little space. And this part is, it can power licensed charge small devices. You can do two things at once, making the energy while you exercise. Don't just take my word for it. Here's a beta tester, Dr. Brewer.
The Electro increases muscle mass and bone density while powering itself, and it reduces the payload of energy entering thighs between the space. Even though the device is heavy and the astronauts still have to strap themselves in, the pros outweigh the cons. And don't forget, it also helps the upper thighs, glutes, and calves be stronger. Our science reporter has even more information to share with you.
What do you think about how the Electro maintains muscle mass and helps bone density but powers itself?
Well, I think it's incredible how they thought of the wonderful idea and put it into action to create an amazing invention.
Thank you, Savannah. Do you think it's better to buy an Electro or stick with the generator?
I believe the Electro is much better, because if you're on a long trip, it will lighten the energy payload.
Wonderful answer, Luke. Why do you think NASA would create something like this?
They might have done it to help long-term space travel, because it will weigh a lot of energy to power the ship for every year. They may have done it because of the ship size. They have possibly combined two things.
During our research and from astro-scientists at Lockheed Martin, we learned astronauts can lose bone density and muscle mass during space travel. How will we help fix this problem?
Imagine an exercise device that can help astronauts from losing their muscle mass and bone density that also generates electricity for devices on a spacecraft.
We created a device called the Electro that will be able to charge space products such as computers, cameras, and other small devices.
All of these would keep the ship from having to use its own energy. We believe this innovation can be used on Earth and is the future of space travel.
Thanks for watching.[427.41][427.41][applause]
Wow. That was a good... We could get NASA to buy it.
You'd be our NASA.
Oh. Yeah. Well, it still looks great, Dad. It's so cool. It helps bone density, muscle mass. It still powers itself.
No way I've ever seen anything bigger than this. Isn't that big?
I think I need one at my house.
At least I have real, something cool ones.
Oh, yeah. But Commander, how much do we have to exercise in space?
Once every day.
Yes.[454.12][454.12][applause]
Thanks to the high school digital journalism class and Ms. Roberts for helping us with the video. I would like to thank you, the board members, Ms. Mason, Mr. Winkler, Ms. Jones, and our sponsors, Ms. Ogil, Mrs. Tomlinson, and Mr. Spinko. Huge thanks to our parents for sitting for 10 hours at the University of Memphis.[480.12][480.12][laughter]
Outstanding job, Space Cadets. Thank you so much for your presentation. It was fabulous. We really enjoyed it. And teachers, parents, thank you for what you do every single day, too. We appreciate your support and help. And it looks like it's doing really well. Thank you, Ms. Jones. I see you over there, Ms. Anna Jones. Thank you. Thank y'all so much for coming.
Did I hear you say that you competed against eighth graders and won? And you guys are all what grade?
Fifth.
Fifth. Wow. Can't wait to see you guys when you get in eighth grade up there.
There you go.[517.39][517.39][laughter][518.39][518.39][applause] Now, we're going to let you stay if you want to, but if you do want to leave at this time, we do understand. But if you would love to stay for the meeting, we'd love to have you, but sunshine may be calling. Who knows?[535.85][535.85][laughter] Okay, Ms. Gore, any citizens' comments?
None.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go to approval of the agenda. Are there any items that any member wants to add to our agenda?
Madam Chairman, I move that we take from the table Policy 6.310 dress code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, there's been a motion to... It's been moved and seconded to take from the table dress code 6.310, and it has been seconded, no discussion. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. All right, the ayes have it, and the motion is carried, and we will add dress code 6.310 to the agenda. It will be 10G. 10G. All right, let's go ahead, and is there a motion to... Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. See, I am hyperactive, remember. I apologize, Ms. Gore. We're going to give Ms. Gore time to add this to the agenda. I have so much confidence in you that I think you can do it just like that.[634.12][634.12][laughter] All right, we'll move on to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the March 26, 2019 agenda?
So, move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Lamar and seconded by Dr. Viall. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried. Okay, we will move on to reports. I know Dr. Viall has been working on this, and certainly Ms. Speakman and Ms. Mason, with our legislative agenda and talking to our legislators. And as you all know, we've been really trying to email and text our representative Leatherwood about the educational savings account. Well, I did notify and talk to Mayor Wissman, and he said that he would notify mayors, municipal mayors, and also ask their aldermen and commissioners to ask them to write and text or call Representative Leatherwood, and he agreed to do that for us. And I certainly appreciate our mayor taking the time to do that for us. The vote will be tomorrow in full Education Committee, tomorrow, Wednesday, at 8:30 a.m. Right now, it's not looking so good, but we're going to all keep hoping that he's going to keep listening, because we keep texting and emailing him constantly. So, I appreciate all the board members being so active in that. And Ms. Mason and Ms. Speakman, thank you. We appreciate it. And staff or principals, if you want to, tonight, he sent him an email, Representative Leatherwood, about the... To vote no for educational savings accounts, that certainly would be appreciated. Okay, the superintendent's evaluation, you're going to receive that from Ms. Linda Haskins. It's going to be an electronic copy again this year, and she's been working on that for us, and I certainly appreciate Ms. Haskins doing that. We're going to have that... We're going to try to have that to you on Monday, April the 8th, by email, and the evaluation will be due no later than April the 30th, following the Board Policy 5.800. Also, would like you to notice that you can send in that evaluation before April 30th to ACS General Counsel for tabulation, if you wish to do so. So, that won't be a problem. But we wanted to give you plenty of time to fill this out, but we didn't want you to forget about it either. Sometimes I can put things back and think I'm going to get back to it, and I might forget about it. So, we... And according to policy, also, board members and the superintendent will receive a copy of each evaluation along with the tabulated evaluation results no later than June 30th. So, just so you know the procedure on that. I hope you find that helpful, and you can write down that date, April the 8th. Also, we wanted to look at having a work session in April for a CIP update. I was looking at, and just throwing this date out here for you, April the 16th, Tuesday. What does that look like for your schedules? Anybody?
What time of the day?
I'm sorry?
What time of the day?
Is that bad for you?
Yeah, I'll be at the Ames Retreat.
Okay. Well, we're going to have to reevaluate that. I tell you what, I will send you an email, and we can see if we can come together and include the superintendent on that. We can come together on that.
We'll do Monday the 15th.
You can do Monday the 15th? How does Monday the 15th look to everybody?
Is that an all-day event?
No.
Let's just be a work session.
No. It's just a work session, 5:30.
Oh, 5:30, yeah.
That's reasonable. It's what time? 5:30?
Yes.
I have a mandatory dance team.[870.62][870.62][laughter] Not me. I'm not on the dance team.[873.62][873.62][laughter] A dance team parent meeting that night, so that's a terrible... I have to go to that.
All right, I tell you what, we'll do... Let me email you, and let me see if we can come up with a date, okay? How's that? So, we won't waste any more time tonight. We'll just... I'll just email you, and we can come up with a date. All right, and this is just for some information. If you need any points for your boardsmanship awards, TSBA is having a webinar on April the 5th from 11 to 12. You can do it at your home, of course, and it's "What is the Basic Education Program?" I'm sure all of you would want to listen to that great webinar.[905.81][905.81][laughter] It is from 11 to 12, but if you need three points, it's worth three points, just to let you know.
Will you send out a link or anything to that, or how do I...
I'll be glad to do that.
Would you do that?
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
More than happy to do that. Also, Dr. Viall asked me, or asked us as board members, about the awards for TSBA recognition. I did want you to know that there is a TSBA Student Recognition Award, which I hope that one of our high school students would be able to apply for this. What happens, I think it's due... The nomination form is due in May, and then what happens is, TSBA sends out the information for the student to fill out about himself. So, Ms. Mason, I don't know if you want us to give this to a certain person to see if we can get...
I've already done it.
Oh, good. Oh, great.
Yeah.
Well, great. What about the volunteer award?
If you want to give that to me, I'll make sure we'll look at the high school on that.
Sure. Now, this is online, but I just copied it, just so we'd have it, okay? Also, the School Volunteer Award, Recognition Award, we possibly in one of our schools might have somebody to do that, and this also is online. And then there's... You fill out first the application, and then there's all this material that they want you to send in.
Submit with it.
Submit with it, correct. But that's a copy of that. Now, the Board of Distinction Award, I did check that out, and unfortunately, we could not do that this year, because we did not have a seven-hour retreat. We're required to have a seven-hour retreat. So, next year, we'll shoot for that and make sure that we do that. But, you know, one thing that's a little funny about this Board of Distinction, Ms. Fletcher and I had the privilege of evaluating Germantowns for the Board of Distinction, and we had that pleasure a couple of years ago, I believe. And so, we would have to have other school boards to come in and evaluate us during our meetings and give us a good checklist and recommendations and all that good things. But what is so funny about it is that you will not get a plaque unless you pay $150 for the plaque. So, I found that a little interesting. So, I'm not sure if we want the plaque or not, but if we do get it, we're going to have to pay $150 for the plaque. But at any rate, if the board wants to do that, we certainly will pursue that. But I did promise Dr. Viall that I would look into that, and I wanted to keep my word. So, we need to... I know we have great students and volunteers that we can certainly acknowledge, so I appreciate that. Sometimes I hesitate on that, because I hate to give our staff one more thing.[1085.83][1085.83][laughter] You know, so that's the only reason. But at any rate, I appreciate all of y'all. Thank you so much. That is the chairman's report, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I have several things on my report tonight. First, I wanted to report out to the board, you all will remember that we have started our first rollout for online registration this year. We rolled it out in early March. We did also have one in-person registration for those that just weren't comfortable enough in doing the online. We're still working on getting folks registered. And I don't know, we met today. Currently, we have right at 69% of our projected students registered. That's compared to 88% this time last year. So, obviously, we're significantly about 20 percentage points below where we were last year. Now, our online registration is open through Friday, and so we're sending out robo-calls, personal calls, and things of that nature. So, we're hoping that, because we've left that online registration window up until Friday, that we're going to be able to get close to that 88% when that window closes.
I have a question about that. If... So, I registered online, registered my two kids online, provided the information, you know, the copies of the proof of residency.
Right.
Will we do that? Do they do that again, or is that going to suffice for the registration in the fall?
So, in the fall, you'll have to provide your proofs again in person when the kids pick up their schedules.
Okay.
And so, that's called a Proof Verification Day. And we started that, I guess this will be our third year for doing them twice. It's important this time of the year, so we can make sure we know what staffing is. And what we've found out through previous incidents is that there's a lot of movement of people between March and August, and so we need to make sure that people still reside at that when school starts.
Got you.
But you won't have to go through the whole registration. It's just come to pick up your schedule, show your proofs, pick up your schedule, and go home.
Got you. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And so, obviously, since this is our first year with online registration, we're learning a lot of things. We've already discussed some maybe strategies for next year, but I'll keep the board up to date on our registration numbers and where we are. After, when we close the online registration Friday, I'll send out an update to y'all and let you know where we are at the end of that window. Also, I wanted to let you know that things have not slowed down with the applications for non-residents. We are currently, for next school year, we're at 266 new applicants. That's compared to 251 at this time last year, and we've seen that historically pretty consistent. There was some thought, my own thought, that as we got into year five and six, that those... That we wouldn't be able to sustain that between 250 and 300 applicants each year, but we are continuing to get those applicants. We're still going through the screening process, so as those are screened and approved and/or denied, letters are sent home. And so, I will be giving the board an update on where we end up with all those applicants. The staff has been screening kindergartners as well, so there's a lot of screening that goes into those applications. I do want to let you know, with the new online registration, it's easier for us to identify. We have had to date 450 brand-new families register.
Wow.
For this month, which is a lot at this point. And so, I think the projections that we worked on, Mr. Mayo, we've got spots for all of them, as long as we can get all the existing folks in and registered. I do want to let you know, when we're looking at our non-resident applicants, the heaviest grades are those entry grades for each grade band. And so, currently, of those applications for non-residents, we have 69 applications for kindergarten, 31 for sixth grade, and 62 for ninth grade. So, it's those entry grades that are the heaviest. We still have applications for the other grades, but those by far stand out from all the other grades, and that's been consistent year after year. Okay, let's talk about some capital projects. Middle School Gym, the project that continues to go. I will say, we had a meeting today. They are making progress. Had an opportunity to walk through. It is in the dry. Actually, we're painting today. We are looking right now, the timeline that we received today, the substantial completion date was the end of May, but understand, that's not the completion of the project, but the substantial completion is end of May. We are hopeful that, because when the floors get in, they have to have time to cure and the paint on the floors, that we're hopeful that early July, that project will be completed. And so, we're continuing to monitor that. We are beginning to meet weekly for that project, just to make sure we stay on top of things as things arise. So, but quite impressive walking through. If any of you would like to take a look at it, just let me know, and we'll schedule a time, and we'll go over and take a look at it. It's going to be quite an impressive facility when completed. Give you an update on the indoor athletic facility. We've been working with the town on some of the exterior products that will be used. They... We were hoping to be able to use the same materials that's in the rest of the athletic complex with that split blocks for the foundation piece of the building. The town has not approved that. We met today. We have an alternative that'll be going before Angela, the Planning Director, this Friday, and hopefully with approval to go before the Planning Commission next Tuesday for the athletic facility. Once we go before the Planning Commission, and really that's... If Angela approves it, it's really just courtesy, because we're a government entity. It's not that they'll vote on it. It's more of a courtesy. And then, at that point, it will take Renaissance about six to eight weeks to complete the construction documents, and then, so we're hoping for that project to go out to bed early July, which will work great for our budgeting, because we'll be able to budget that for next year, and we won't have to do any kind of budget amendments in this year to get started. So, the timing of it's pretty good. We're looking at that to be between a six- to eight-month project. So, we're looking at that to be ready by spring next year, hopefully. We talked about Ms... Williams talked about the work session for an update to the CIP. So, what we'll be doing, once we get that date, we and my team were working on that. We've been meeting, we've met with principals. All the guys have done facility assessment projects. We're looking at our existing CIP plan, as well as things I've heard from you all, and we will be putting together a draft. We're working on that now, that we will get out to you ahead of the work session. We want... We would like for you guys to be looking at that and come to that meeting prepared to look at those projects, look at when those projects, how are we prioritizing those projects, and what other projects that aren't on that that we may want to add, and discuss what those needs are. And then, and then, once we... After we have that work session, we'll take the information from that, we'll create a final product to bring before the board in April to vote on. Okay? Any questions about that process? Next, I do just want to let you know that on April the 3rd, Wednesday, April 3rd, which I believe is next Wednesday, I'll be doing a brief presentation to the County Commission for capital, for our capital projects that we've done up to date. We've been asked, each of the municipal superintendents have been asked to go before the County Commission, and just give an overview of how we determine what our capital process is, what capital projects have we completed, what is the breakdown of the funding for those, between County Commission, local funding, and other funding, and also share best practices and how we accomplish, how do we get to what projects we're going to do. The three of the superintendents went last week, had an opportunity to be there. The County Commissioners also asked additional questions beyond the capital, but wanted to let you know that I will be there along with Germantown in Lakeland on April the 3rd. We are working on a PowerPoint for that, and once that's completed, I'll send that out to each of you, so you'll just see what I'm sharing with the County Commission.
What time will that be?
We don't know yet.
Approximately?
It's not on the agenda. It hasn't been posted yet. I can tell you that the last one was scheduled for 11:05, but gosh, they didn't get started until about 12:00, 12:30. So, once the agenda comes out, I'll share that with you all.
I may want to go.
Yep. Once that comes out, I'll share the agenda with you. And last thing I have, and then I want to share, have Hugh share something, that lastly, all the parents will be receiving a Family Life Curriculum Letter on Tuesday, April the 2nd. Y'all may remember from previous years, that's mandated by Tennessee law, Family Life Curriculum for students in grades K through 8. That is a set curriculum. Parents do have the option to opt out if they so choose, though they must take that before the principal. And that will be occurring sometime in early May. And with that, Hugh and I have been working on something for a nomination of one of our teachers. Hugh, you want to share the nomination that you're going to be taking before your body, that one of your... One of Hugh's many organizations that he's a member of.
I have to remember which one it is, so I don't go into the next one.[1691.83][1691.83][laughter] I belong to three Air Force organizations. I better get it down right here. I'm the treasurer of the Cook Chapter, 335 of the Air Force Association. We have 300 members here in Memphis, in the Memphis area. We have 90,000 members in the United States of America. We have four chapters here in Tennessee, one in Chattanooga, one here in Memphis, one in Knoxville, one in Nashville. And every year, we present an award for STEM Teacher of the Year. We've done this for several years. Now, the past few years, Houston High School has done so. We're going to take it away from Houston this year, and we're going to...
family life curriculum for students in grades K through eight. That is a set curriculum. Parents do have the option to opt out if they so choose, that they must take that before the principal. And that will be occurring sometime in early May. And with that, Hugh and I have been working on something for nomination of one of our teachers. Hugh, you want to share the nomination that you're going to be taking before your, your body? That one of your, one of Hugh's many organizations that he's a member of?
I have to remember which one it is, so I don't go into next. I belong to three Air Force organizations. I better get it down right here. I'm the treasurer of the Cook Chapter, three-thirty-five of the Air Force Association. We have three-hundred members here in Memphis, in the Memphis area. We have ninety-thousand members in the United States of America. We have four chapters here in Tennessee. One in Chattanooga, one here in Memphis, one in Knoxville, one in Nashville. And every year, we present an award for STEM Teacher of the Year. We've been, done this for several years. Now, the past few years, Houston High School has done so. We're going to take it away from Houston this year, and we're going to have it for Arlington High School. So, I, I talked with Ms. Mason here early in the week, and we got, you got to fill out a form and the normal paperwork, what the teacher does, and the background, the principal, the superintendent, and the, the paperwork. So, I have it here. Just got it, hadn't read it. So, we'll be submitting this, and as the Cook Chapters TO, Teacher of the Year, and then it will go to the state competition, and it could go to the national. So, we just know where it goes. And there'll be a presentation sometimes this year to, to the teacher that we have presented at our meeting. We meet quarterly at the airport, at the Air National Guard, four or five times a year. We have a speaker, and we have, we have Germantown barbecue. So, that, that influences a lot of people to show up. So, anyway, I, I wanted to thank Ms. Mason and the Teacher of the Year. They have submitted, and we'll hear more about this as we move through the rest of the summer and the fall. So, thanks very much, and we are honored to have Arkton High School as the STEM Teacher of the Year from our area.
That's great. Thank you, Hugh. And the teacher is Casey Serran Rogers. She's one of the high school STEM teachers. Very bright teachers, doing great things for that program. And the last thing I want to say is that two of our students from STEM Four went on a field trip. Ms. Carolyn Wirey put together a field trip to medical device company in Bartlett, Odyssey. And those kids went there, and the folks there, obviously, one of our big priorities is trying to find internships for these kids. Well, Ms. Wirey had engaged the, the leadership of the folks at Odyssey. And these, these, these leaders within Odyssey were so impressed with our kids that they have hired two of our kids as interns for, for the summer and then beyond. And they've been very impressed with those kids. I asked, so what other schools have they gotten interns? These are the first two high school students that they've ever had interns. So, I want to say thank you to, to Mr. Goforth and Ms. Wirey for setting that up. There's all kinds of activities and field trips that they're taking our, 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 these kids in their career paths, too, and we're starting to see the fruits of that labor. So, I did, I did just want to mention that. And with that, that concludes my report.
Love that.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. General Counsel report, Ms. Speckman?
Nothing in secret.
Okay. Financial report, Ms. Robertson?
Good afternoon. Both reports presented will be for, through January two thousand and nineteen. For the general fund, we have revenues of twenty-three-point-four million year-to-date, and expenditures of twenty-two million. In the nutrition fund, we have revenues of six-hundred-forty-four-thousand-five-hundred-fifty dollars, and expenditures of five-hundred-sixty-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. Under federal and discretionary grants, we have revenues of one-million-eighty-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars, and expenditures of the same amount. For the CIP fund, we have revenues received of two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-nine-hundred dollars, and expenditures of one-million-five-hundred-ninety-one dollars and eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars for the middle school roof and the middle school gym project. For the interlocal health benefits plan asset trust report, January two thousand and nineteen, year-to-date revenues of thirty-one-point-five million, year-to-date expenses of twenty-three-point-eight million, a beginning balance of one-point-eight million, and an ending balance of nine-point-five million. That concludes the financial reports.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. TLN report, Dr. Vioxx.
I'll just be brief. I've been in pretty much constant communication with the TSBA lobbyist and with you guys as well. And first, I want to say thank you to all the board members for being so responsive and being fast. This is a huge deal that comes up tomorrow. And I want to thank everybody, in my opinion. This legislative stuff is one of the more important things that we do. And I want to thank all of you for being responsive and reaching out and doing the things, whatever we can to help. You guys have all, I, I hope everybody had a chance today to look at the thing that Garrett Nicely sent out about some talking points about the ESAs. It's the same thing that we've talked about before. And just aware, and I think I texted everybody or sent an email last week, when they amended this bill, they essentially made it a voucher program, which is really less about ESAs and more about vouchers at this point. But if you didn't have a chance to look at that email sent today, it really outlines a lot of what's wrong with this bill. A couple of high points are that, that the ESAs are going to be funded for three years and three years only. So, it doesn't take a genius to figure out that that twenty-five million dollars is going to have to come from somewhere. The other takeaway from this is that they can bank this money towards secondary education. So, that's going to really create a situation where they're looking ahead instead of looking at their current education. And lastly, the most detrimental to public education, other than the money, is that they can re-enter the LEA at any given time. And so, if you think about what that means for us, and, and remember, we talked about last meeting about the rampant fraud in these states that have had ESAs. People bought beauty products, hired personal trainers, tried to actually use it as an actual debit card and withdraw money on it. But that's not terribly far-fetched from what it's actually going to be. You can go out, you can buy personal computers, you can buy all this other stuff for education. And when you run out of money, all you do is come right back to your regular LEA. There is no more money for that student. It's all been allocated, so you're going to educate them to the detriment of your bottom line. So, that, that, in my opinion, is the biggest thing, that they're, they're always going to be able to just walk right back in. The other thing is the accountability piece. I think it's really unconscionable that you can say every student in the state of Tennessee in the public school system has to take this test, and this test, and this test, but you're going to award these, this money to these students and have them not accountable.
Absolutely.
It's just not fair, and it's, it's not a level playing field. And so far, Representative Leatherwood's been pretty good about being on our side. We got words today, that they're putting quite a bit of pressure on him. I think you guys all got an email today from me that showed some of the stuff that's going on behind the scenes and the pressure they're putting on the TSBA to back off of this, which, which is good. That means that all of us collectively are doing what we're supposed to do, and that's advocate for public education. And so, I just implore everyone to keep pushing, reach out. I've spoken to the mayor as well about what he can do to help us. And I just wanted to say thanks, really. The biggest vote is tomorrow, so we'll see what happens.
And it's an early vote.
It's early.
Eight-thirty.
Yeah, it's early. So, as you said, Madam Chair, anybody that can, please contact your representatives and try and talk them into voting against this. This is a, this is probably, in my opinion, since we've been a body the closest that, that they've ever gotten to pushing this through, and there's a tremendous amount of pressure on that. Yes, it will be televised. So, we'll know who we can lobby against when they run for reelection.
Yeah, I watched the video on one of the subcommittees.
Yeah, it's pretty interesting to watch, some of the stuff that happens.
Hey, where will that be?
You can, you can go to the Tennessee.gov, and you can put in your bill number. And the bill is, let me, I have it right here.
Will you send that out to us?
HB nine thirty-nine. And you can plug that in, and there's a video icon when you, when you track that bill. Click it.
Oh, yeah.
Can you send a link out to them?
We'll waste a lot of time.
So, you can watch it, you, you can do two things. You can watch it as it's happening. So, what you would do is, and I'll send this, but anyway, you'll go into the House Committee Agenda, and then you click that, and the whole committee, not just that bill, but everything's online. Or if you can't watch it live, you can watch it anytime, later in the day or any other day, by doing it the way Dr. Vioxx said, which is plugging in the bill. So, I'll, I guess I'll do it the way that it would plug you into the bill. But if you want to watch it live, I'll try to put a second link.
That'd be right. Thank you.
Just to watch it then.
Thank you.
And, and so, but, but main, the main message is tomorrow's a big one. Thank you for guys, for all of you. I, I do believe, and the chairman can back me up on this, I think this is the most responsive that this particular body has been
Don't agree.
to the legislature. And I appreciate that, that, that really, it makes a big difference. One last thing, I want to piggyback on what you said about the TSBA awards. And it's hard for me to remember what I've told the whole board, other than just the chairman. But TSBA, due to lack of participation, has talked about getting rid of some of these awards. And, and the important thing about some of these student awards that, that she was speaking of, is that they carry a recurring, reoccurring scholarship of two thousand dollars. So, it's not a small thing, you know, just to fill out a little bit of paperwork, get recognized. That, that is a substantial monetary amount that these students can have. And I will also say that the, the students completing the paperwork has seemed to have been a bit of a struggle for the TSBA Board of Directors, is getting them to finish that. Like, they'll sign up, they'll, they'll do the initial stuff and then not follow through with the other stuff. So, when, when we do look at the students, honestly, if there's anything I can do to help them fill out this paperwork, I'm happy to. And I'm sure everyone else up here is as well. But, but it's no small thing, so I appreciate you mentioning that.
Absolutely.
All right, that's it.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Vioxx. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Art, it's been moved by Mr. Lamar, I'll think of your name, and seconded by Mr. Benjamin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried. Superintendent Mason, will you lead us through our budget items and business action items?
Yes, ma'am. The, the next item, nine A, is our monthly budget resolution, Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash zero five. You'll see, there's, there's not very many budget amendments this month. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions that you may have. But as we, as we get closer and closer to the end of the fiscal year, you're going to start seeing some of these accounts true up and areas that, that's needed. So, but any particular question about each one, I'll be happy to answer, or Ms. Roberts. And with that is my recommendation to pass Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash zero five.
Art, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been approved by Dr. Vioxx, seconded by Ms. Fletcher. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried.
Our next item, Business Recommended Action Items, ten A. It's that time again for summer school. We are working on what our summer programs will be. Summer school is a big piece of our summer program for kids, eighth through twelfth grade. And this resolution is the board authorizing fees for summer school for students. You will see that the summer school tuition will be two, three hundred dollars for Arlington Middle eighth graders only, and two hundred dollars per half-credit, or four hundred dollars for, for a whole-credit. This money simply goes to pay the staff that will be teaching for the summer. And so, with that, and this is consistent with what we've done in prior, previous years. So, with that, it is my recommendation to approve Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash zero six.
Or is there a motion to approve?
I'm so moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Fletcher, seconded by Mr. Lamar. Is there any discussion?
Is this the same as last year, that you stated?
It is.
We didn't change it at all?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried. Next item?
Our next item is Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash zero seven, ten B. This is our monthly item that we do for, to amend the student fee schedule for field trips, you will see. And as we get closer to the end of the school year, this, there will not be many, many more this year. We only have one this, this month. It's for the high school choir, the All-State Honor Choir rehearsals and concerts competition at the Upper Land Resort. You will see the student fee for that, attached fifty-five dollars for registration fee, as well as one-fourth of the hotel room for each student, which is a hundred, so a total of a hundred and fifty-five dollars. That will be on April the tenth. With that is my recommendation for the board to approve Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash zero seven.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Art, it's been moved by Mr. Benjamin, seconded by Ms. Fletcher. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried.
Our next item on the agenda, ten C, is the approval of the textbook committee work that they've done for the recommendations for the textbooks, for social studies, world languages, career and technical education, marketing, finance, business management, and administration. So, what you have attached are those recommendations from the committee for each of those subjects. And with that, we'll entertain any questions that you may have, either myself or Mr. Goforth. This was a committee work that was done by a group of teachers. So, with that, it is my recommendation to approve these recommendations.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Vioxx, seconded by Mr. Lamar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried.
Our next item, our next three items are capital projects that are all in line with our five-year capital plan. The first one, we have, these are all projects that have been out to bid, and the bid has come back. And so, the first one, item ten D, is recommendation to award the bid for general contracting services for the Arlington High School soccer field project to A and B Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of one-hundred-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars.
All right, you've heard the motion? Um, excuse me, is there a motion to approve?
I'm so moved.
Second.
Art, it's been moved by Ms. Fletcher, seconded by Mr. Benjamin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried.
Our next item on the agenda is item ten E. This particular project is the high school football bleacher enclosures. And so, with that, I make a recommendation to award the bid for general contracting services for the Arlington High School bleacher enclosure project to A and B Construction Company, in the amount of one-hundred-forty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-two dollars. And grant the superintendent the authority to negotiate the terms of the related contract.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've had a, it's been moved by Mr. Lamar, seconded by Mr. Benjamin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried.
And the last project on the agenda, I'm glad Ms. Jones is here. This is for her school. And then, before, well, let me give the recommendation, let me give you a little context why we're, we're bringing this now. It is the recommendation to award the bid for general contracting services for Arlington Elementary Schools roof project to Arc Roofing in the amount of seven-hundred-ninety-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. And recommendation to grant the superintendent the authority to negotiate the terms of the related contract. I do want to say is that this actual project is in FY twenty. But in order for it to get done during the summer, we need two months, June, which is in one fiscal year, July, which is in another fiscal year. So, we want to go ahead and start it in June, so it'll be completed in FY, the FY twenty year. So, with that is my recommendation to award that bid to Arc Roofing.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I'm so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Fletcher, seconded by Dr. Vioxx. Is there any discussion?
I, I hate to ask you, but is that the entire roof? That's not part of the roof? That's the entire school?
That's the entire roof, except for the, the latest addition, which...
Four-hundred hall.
All but the four-hundred hall. And, and, you know, that, that, that school was what, three different faces?
Yeah.
And so, that, it's just not time for that face, yet.
That's all but that.
We get a few more years out of that, that hallway.
Okay.
Yep.
No leaks, huh?
Hopefully.
That'll be good. That's good. All right, any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried. All right, I guess we're ready for item G, dress code six-point-three-one-zero. Do we have a motion?
I'm so moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, it's been moved by Mr. Benjamin and seconded by Dr. Vioxx. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I'll speak into this.
Yeah, I'll speak into this. This is something that I had brought up that we tabled last time to be able to talk about just a bit here in this. This is something that was brought to me, honestly, by my own daughter, who has a nose ring, who is a, probably a top-10 student in her class, involved at high school, and her grades are phenomenal. And so, this, honestly, she hasn't been the one that's really received any pushback or anything from this. Really, has been other friends of hers that have received pushback from this, and brought it to me asking about it. So, I told her that I would be glad to at least look into it from a board perspective, and came across this, that we prohibit nose rings. And so, that was my point, and I'm not really sure why this is a policy, if it's gonna be something that's gonna be difficult for us to... What I'm hearing is, is that it becomes much more of a difficulty and a distraction to actually, even in trying to enforce the policy, it is to even have the, to not having a policy. So, I'm thinking that we're adding more to our teachers to do, enforcing if someone has a nose piercing, if they have a stud in their nose, a little small nose ring in their nose, to do that versus a policy that is... And the reality is, it's a policy that I'm hearing is somewhat back and forth. Some people do it, some people don't. That's no reflection on you, Superintendent. I like to go on record as saying that. That is not a reflection on you. I just think it's a policy that is somewhat outdated for today and something we ask our teachers to do that is not a useful use of their time.
My concern is that no facial jewelry, I'm not sure what all that includes. I don't think it just includes no nose rings. So, I'm concerned about opening the floodgates, to be honest with you, about this. So, that's my basic concern.
So, I guess my question to that would be, is if it opens the floodgates for what people choose to wear, if it's not affecting their education, what's the purpose in having a policy that doesn't affect their education?
I guess my concern is that it would. Just been my experience in the education world, that that's what happens, that... Also, it's, to me, in some ways, it also points to the classroom tone, the tone of the classroom, because a teacher does have to have that, I hate to use the word "control", but has to have that climate and that relationship with their students that they are able to teach in that classroom in a good, positive climate. So, you know, constantly, you know, I just, I feel like that, you know, if a teacher says, well, you know, remove your nose ring right there, and then she's, she or he is setting a tone for her classroom that obviously, the other students go, well, you know, she's, she's in charge, or he's in charge.
Right.
You know, the classroom teacher.
Well, I probably come from a different perspective, because I'm still teaching at the college level, and they can have any kind of ring in my classroom. They have, and I don't see anything about it, 'cause there are no rules. You know, as long as, even baggy pants has gotten by for a while. We tolerated that one. But, see, I'm on that side of the fence. It doesn't make any difference. We do have a rule, and I think we ought to stand by the rule. I think you're just, you're having more police thing. Well, this is good, this is bad. So, I think I'm believing it like it is, and that's the way I'll be voting.
Yeah, my point in not, in having the rule is it gives our teachers something else to have to police. It's another thing, rather than teaching,
Yeah.
that we're looking for little small nose rings, we're looking for, wait, does she have one? Does he have one? Am I gonna have to take the time to take this out? Again, which takes, seems to take more time from, away from teaching to something that is innocuous, not detracting from the teaching. We're asking our teachers to do something additional, rather than what it is that we put them in place to do, and that's...
I think it takes us down the wrong path if we say yes to this. I think we're just putting more burden on our teachers, and I'm going to go the other way.
Okay, but the burden that we're putting on our teachers by having the policy is the burden, is to say, you've got to take that out. We've got to police it. Actually, removing the policy takes the burden away from our teachers to have to police that. That actually relieves them from that, is, would be my point in this.
If the rule is there, and the students know the rule is there, then they should abide by it, and then the teacher wouldn't have to bother about policing anything, and...
Again, this is my point, not to have the rule.
But I just, I'm with Hugh about it. I say it's there. I'd vote to leave it.
So, may I ask, Mr. Benjamin, this was specifically about the nose ring, specifically, or...
That has, yes, nose ring specifically. It's what has been brought to my attention, that that was the things that's been addressed by some and not by others.
So, I will say that, you know, I think that culturally, the nose ring in certain cultures is a thing that they do. I work with several people that have them, some that don't have them. And I certainly don't want to speak for the other board members, but it seems like, just based on what Mr. Lamar and the chairwoman and Ms. Fletcher, that their concerns may be beyond the nose ring, you know, the lips, the eyebrows, the other stuff like that.
You can see the bars now in the eyebrows. You know, facial jewelry, I mean, where do we go? I mean, it just seems like it could include...
So, I'm wondering...
Tattoos, I wonder, is that facial? You know, I've seen tears and, you know, tattoos on the face that concerns me, that is that part of facial jewelry? I mean, you could argue that it is, I mean, you know.
Well, that's kind of my point, is if it was just specifically about a nose ring, and I think those are a lot more culturally acceptable now, in certain cultures, they all have them. And this is more a question for you. If we carved out an exclusion for a nose ring, but we said none of the other stuff, is that gonna be a challenge for us? Meaning, is it all or nothing, or is there some room here to compromise? Where would we stand as far as enforcement of this?
Two things, I guess. Number one is, is that if you were gonna consider that, of course, you'd ask for a motion to amend
Right.
the policy, which, the policy that's on the agenda at this point is to remove that language, so...
Which is as it's written.
Right. So, we'd have to make a motion to do that, and second, and that takes precedence over the motion, I mean, the, yeah, the original motion on the floor, which is the motion to exclude, or, yeah, to exclude all that language altogether. So, that's number one. Number two is, in terms of, I think the rest of your question had to do with, does it place us in any kind of legal jeopardy if you were to carve out that one type of jewelry, I suppose? And the answer is no, as long as whatever you land on is equally enforced. And I think at the end of the day, that's something that we need to make sure that whatever you land on, that the school is well-aware of what the requirements are, and that they, again, apply it equally across the board.
Okay, so I guess my question is to the board, is that, is that something that we can maybe compromise on, since it seems like Mr. Benjamin was the nose ring? I know culturally, a lot of people like the nose rings and don't have the nose ring, but if we prohibited the other stuff, does that satisfy the disruptive part of the classroom, or no? I'm just asking, if there was, if there's...
Oh, certainly room for me, as far as I'm concerned. Again, we can be as specific as we need to be.
Well, that was my question to her. I think we need to be very specific. If we're, if this was something that would satisfy the board as a whole, the superintendent, really, the administrator of the building, you know, to your point, to make it easier on them to enforce, to say, well, if it's a nose ring, it's no big deal, but if it's this, or this, or this, which we essentially already have a rule about. Just a thought.
I think once you compromise, you're doing that road, then there's another step and another step. So, if we just leave it where it is and stand tall, I think it'll be good.
All right, is there any other discussion, or do... All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes, oh, the noes have it, and the motion is not carried, right? All right, let's move on, and I think we are moving on to adjournment, which is a good thing. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Dr. Vioxx, a second by Mr. Benjamin. It's been moved and seconded, so the meeting is, oh, excuse me, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned.